I'd like to call this meeting to order if you please rise to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Barrow, council members Gearbox, C.O., Rhodes, McClellan, Tahar, and Dillon. From city staff we have city manager Campell, Clerk Royal, city superintendent engineer Rubel, Parks and Rec director Scruggs, police chief Rennick, and I don't know if city treasurer business ambassador Bennett is here, she is not here, okay. The rest of you who were in the audience this evening, we appreciate your attendance. If you'd be so kind to sign in in the back to my left, we would appreciate that. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
Move to approve as submitted.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan to approve as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no members absent this evening, so we'll dispense with that motion. So we transition to presentations. We have two this evening. The first is a retirement proclamation for Charles F. McGill. Chief Rennick, do you want to start this off, and then I can say a few words?
Sure.
You want to grab the cordless mic to my left?
Chuck, if you'd like to come up, please.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Well, tonight it's my honor to have Chuck up here. It's been a pleasure working with him. I've only known him a couple of years, but people in the audience like Dave Ringe, who's been around for over 20 years, have had an opportunity to work with him for many years. The mayor has a proclamation for you, and after he's done, I've got something else for you.
All right. All right, Chuck, well, it's an honor to present this letter of recognition on the occasion of your retirement, and I was impressed by some of the things that you've done. And actually, I want to read this proclamation in its entirety, if you and the audience will indulge me. It begins, "Whereas Charles F. McGill, known as Chuck, began his employment with the Saline Police Department as a reserve officer in 1972. And whereas employment forced Chuck to leave for a short time, but he rejoined the reserves again in 1976, and has been a very active member of the unit in his second and seniority, only to Sergeant Larry Weedmire," who also recently retired. "And whereas Chuck attended Detroit Catholic High School, George Washington University, and the Flint Police Academy. And whereas Chuck served his country in the United States Navy during the Vietnam War, and has been employed in the dental supply business for over 40 years. And whereas Chuck is married and has one stepdaughter, one son, and four wonderful grandchildren, Chuck always has a big smile on his face, and along with his unfailing willingness to serve the citizens of Saline is truly appreciated. Now therefore, I Brian DeMarle, Mayor of the city of Saline, on behalf of the Saline City Council and citizens of Saline, do hereby thank Charles F. McGill for his dedicated service to the city of Saline, and specifically to the Saline Police Department, with sincere best wishes for a long and enjoyable retirement. And I send my hand and seal to this document on the eighth day of August 2016." Chuck, congratulations.
Thank you. Chuck, I don't know if you have anything that you'd like to say, but certainly this would be your time.
Okay. Well, it's been an enjoyable time. I've been here a long time, and the reason I did it basically was I enjoyed the work, and I thought I was giving back to the community. I guess I was been here long enough that I saw four chiefs, looked in that board there, I think there's probably nine mayors, I don't know how many council people, and probably hundreds of officers have gone through the department. And I guess through all that time, when you're a police officer, you put the uniform on, you run across a lot of people, good and bad, a lot of situations. And these officers face the same thing that every other department does. In a small town, you don't see it as often, but you do, so it's been fun. Like with anything, you're going to miss the people is the main thing you do. So, thanks for everything.
If I could have all the officers join me up here. You've all been a part of his life, and I'd like you to be a part of this. Mr. C.O., you belong to this as well. Come on up.
Sure. I just want to think I'd like to say, I hope the citizens of Saline and the council appreciate everything that these guys do. You know, someone could call in the middle of the night, a senior citizen, and say, "I heard something," and we'll respond to that and make the person feel better. Very few communities do that. Someone can walk in that door in the middle of the night and talk to a person, and the problems will be resolved. But in a lot of communities, they don't do that, so I hope the community appreciates everything this department does for them.
All right. On behalf of the department, I'd like to present you with your badge, which you've worn for so many years, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
And retirement. Chuck, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Chuck, why don't you, I bet my council colleagues would like to thank you as well.
Okay.
Thanks, Chuck. Again, best wishes. Appreciate you and your family being here this evening. Moving on to the second presentation on tonight's agenda is Tetra Tech, an update on city projects, and I believe we have Mr. Brian Rubel here to give us an update.
Well, good evening.
Good evening. Brian, so you've got a PowerPoint?
I do.
Chase, we want to make sure we have the screen to my left on, and I will get out of your way, Brian.
Very good. Mr. Campell asked me to give a brief summary of a handful of projects that we are fortunate enough to be assisting the city of Saline with, and I promised to be very brief going through these. So, the big one, the one that I've been in front of you a number of times about, is the Phase Two of the wastewater project. And at last month's meeting, we granted the, you granted the contractor till August 15th to be complete, substantially complete with that project, and September 15th to achieve final completion. So that's only a week away. I, we did ask for an update of the contractor today. I can't quite report. They haven't gotten back to me on that. I am slightly concerned they may go a little bit past that August 15th date, but I will keep your staff informed of the result of that inquiry that we made. So I don't think it'll be months, but it may be days. But the key parts of that project, memories perhaps are getting older, new council members, is a rebuilding of your septic handling system. Again, septic is brought from outside the city, from septic tank pumping and hauling operations. It's processed in this new building here that's in the upper right, so that it can, then that water can then pass through the wastewater plant. It is a source of revenue for the city. It's an important part of the process. And that snapshot there shows what the new building is looking like. It's a couple weeks old now, that photo, but it's getting darn close to being done. Another big part of the project was the filters, or we use the fancy word tertiary filters. Tertiary means the third step in the process. It's really the last step prior to disinfection. So it's the last step of cleaning up the wastewater, and those filters, the new filters are in the lower right corner. They're in the stainless steel housing. They're sit in the old filter building. So actually, one of those units, those stainless steel boxes there, equals the, performs equally as that whole bay did before. So, much more efficient with modern technology, and those have been working for a few weeks. They're still working through some startup bugs and so forth, but every day gets a little better with those. Another bullet there, reconditioned secondary treatment, secondary being the second step in the process. You use what is called rotating biological contactors, and I think I have some pictures on the next slide. So they're, they're big discs that turn, and it grows a bacteria on these discs that then treats the water. It absorbs the nutrients and the pollutants in the water, and then that bacteria is settled out later on. So those big discs wear, very, very heavy discs, thousands of pounds. So the mechanical parts of those discs wear over the many years they've been in service. So we have rehabilitated the mechanical parts of those discs. And there really is a couple dozen little pieces of the project to replace aging equipment, almost too numerous to count. And another really important thing, and I don't have a good photo of that, but you had a lot of settlement occurring, concrete settlement, sidewalks were slanted. It was kind of hard to walk around there. If you were to visit that plant, you will see a lot of that has been removed, and it, the aesthetics really are quite a bit better at that plant than they were a few years ago. This project really has improved the look of the plant. I'm very pleased that there have been very few change orders on the project, or at least change orders that haven't amounted to a very large sum of money. So it's gone very well. It's quite challenging to work in an older plant. Things, you find things underground you didn't even know were there, but there's been very little of that on this project. And I'm equally pleased to report that the engineering budget, Tetra Tech's budget to help you through the processes, we're a substantial amount below our budget, and we'll finish well under our limits. So I always pleased to, it's always my goal, and I'm equally pleased to report that to you. Just some more photos of the progress. The upper left, the new RBC drive, again, rotating biological contactor, that's the gear that turns these big discs. And many of those have been replaced. I don't believe they've all been replaced, but some of the older ones, the ones that were malfunctioning have been replaced. And the upper middle photo, new clarifier drive, that's again, a gear that turns the mechanism inside your circular tanks that settle out particulates. So again, those drives wear and fail, and we replace them. They were at the end of their life, and those have been replaced and are there for probably another 20 or 30 years. On the upper right is a control panel for the filters. So that's the electronics that control when the filters turn on and backwash, and just control the whole operation of those filters. In the lower left, the new septic unit, again, that's inside that building I showed on the prior slide. That's the workhorse in there that will process the septic as it comes in. It will take out rocks, it will take out stringy material, so that it can be treated effectively at later stages. The blue housing in the lower middle is the bearing for these big shafts. These are seven-inch diameter steel shafts, so they're this big. And these bearings are very important to keep it balanced and keep it turning efficiently. All of the bearings in these RBCs were replaced, and again, that should keep, that should make Mr. Skull's life easier for many decades. Those things would routinely break. He would have to take it all out of service. He would have to have a service firm come specifically for that. So by having them all replaced, we should be able to go many years without that headache and that disruption. The lower right is, again, after we talked about odors last spring, year ago last spring, we added the odor control unit for one of the digester tanks. So as air is expelled out of this tank, it will go through a carbon filter. The carbon absorbs any particulates in the air, including odors, and will make, will make any air that comes out of that tank, will remove any odor from that. So again, we have probably 300 photos of the project, and the last thing I was going to do was show you all of them to you, but that's a snapshot of them. Moving on, you have asked us to help with a water reliability study, and this is a state requirement. It's in the Michigan Clean Water Act, to update this study every five years, and it's kind of a checkup. You just, it's kind of a checkup of how your water system is doing. We look at things like, what kind of fire flow can we provide to residents? Has anything changed in the last five years? That sort of a thing. Update your map so that any changes that were made to the system are accurately reflected in your records. So we've been working on that up to now. City staff have been marking up any of these changes that have occurred. There's also new requirements to add diameters and pipe materials and ages of pipes. So staff have been digging through records, marking that up by hand. My staff have taken that and put it into the computer, a geographical information system, and have returned that for back checking with city staff. So that should not take very long, and then we'll proceed with the actual engineering analysis for these fire flows over the next couple of months, and we will be done this fall with that project. A utility system development charge is the other project, another project that we've been working on. And again, system development charge is a fancy term for what we commonly refer to as a connection fee for water and sewer. So the cost for a new connection to be made, what charge is requested of them to connect to your system. And it compensates for the value of the infrastructure that they're using, the value of the plant, the value of the pipes underground. So again, city staff had to gather quite a bit of data this spring, and Tetra Tech did a draft analysis in June. We met with city staff. We recognized a few pieces of information that needed to be validated and checked one more time. That has occurred in July, and so this month, my staff are updating that to a final report. We'll meet with staff again, and I suspect I'll be back in front of you in a month or two to share the results of that. Related to the reliability study is updating the geographic information system, or GIS, for storm, sanitary, and water. You asked me to do that in the spring. One of the first steps we needed to do was survey the stormwater outfalls. That's an important part of your stormwater permit that you have with the state, an accurate reflection of the outfalls. It was critical that we did that in a very short window of time, after any snow had melted and before the leaves had appeared on the trees. We need to use GPS to grab that data. So Mr. Fordice and I outlined a plan. We jumped out there in that window of time in April. We got that data. We have updated the maps with the information that we had, and city staff are now marking that, those other maps up for any development changes, any other revisions that have been made. So I expect they will deliver that back to my staff end of the summer, beginning of the fall, and we'll work on getting those completed this fall for the city. And lastly, this is not a current project, but it is a project that is on the horizon, knock on wood. You may remember those that were on council a few years ago, back in 2013, the city applied for a large grant from the state of Michigan called a Stormwater hyphen Asset Management hyphen Wastewater Grant, or SAW, is the abbreviation that's used. Communities throughout Michigan were given the opportunity to apply for this. City applied in 2013. It was an enormous response. I think there were 660 communities that applied, and it was not scored. It was just strictly, communities were ranked in a lottery basis. And Saline was in the middle somewhere of that ranking. The city, the state has enough money to give out $100 million a year for these grants. It amounts to about 100 communities. I think the average request is about $1 million. So every year, they give out about 100 of these. In 2015, Saline was only eight spots away from getting funded. So you are the eighth community down on, in the next year's cycle. So again, these are given out in October. So there is, there is still money left in the program. So we are very optimistic that come October, you're going to get a nice letter from the state with just shy of a $1 million award for this program. So this will help develop an asset management plan for your wastewater system, your plant, your sewers, and you also requested money for your stormwater system. So you will have money to do both of those. There is no guarantee that money will be there. The state only promises it each October for a select few. So, but there is money in the program. So unless the state diverts that money somewhere else, I think you're in good standing to get that. And I believe that is the end of what I had. I certainly thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for the many opportunities that you've given Tetra Tech to serve the city.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rubel. Are there any questions for our guests? Mr. Gearbox?
Just a couple. As we're looking at this, how can you tell us about the automation and improvement in efficiencies and so forth? Do we expect to see a great improvement on energy efficiency, ability to operate it, and some of those other aspects?
In particular, the wastewater project?
Correct.
So energy efficiency was one of your questions, and just operating efficiency?
Operating efficiency and automation, and then also the piece with the septic. We were always concerned about tracking that and the process, and whether to handle that. That was also installed.
Tracking of the septic?
Septic, yes.
Okay, I think I can answer, answer those topics. Whether I've answered precisely your question, I'm not sure. But let me start with the septic. I think that's the easiest one for me to comment upon. There is software that is provided in that project. So you will, each septic hauler will actually have a swipe card. And one option is to, you could grant them credit against the swipe card, or you could actually make it a debit type of a system where they have to pre-deposit money, and then each time they use the septic facility, it would just deduct from their account. So that will be automated. That will be, we've worked on a network connection back to your servers here in this building so that all of that accounting is automated. You'll just be able to pull up a spreadsheet anytime and see right, what the balance of any of the users of the system are. So is that the tracking question?
That's the one.
Very good. As far as energy and operating automation, things like that, I think the septic building in itself will lead you some efficiency. As I recall, the old one did have a tendency to break down. It was at the end of its life. So again, you're getting a new system in that regard. The, the previous filters that you had were sand filters. They were old. They were almost, I think the effectiveness of them were somewhat in question. They were, they were that old. I know Mr. Skull questioned whether they were providing much value. So these new filters are quite a bit more efficient than the old ones, as far as their function. And it all works by gravity, so I can't say that there's any energy efficiency at the filters. Both systems work by gravity. Isn't, neither one of them required more pumping. So I think the real advantage will be time savings of your staff. They will, these pieces of equipment should be more reliable, should not break down as much. So I think that's really where your savings are going to be, and freeing up their time to invest in other places in the plant, not repairing this equipment. There is a control panel, too, a SCADA control panel, so there is some automation as well. The, actually, the water plant data is now going back to the wastewater plant. So they can keep an eye on the water plant at the same time, not have to run over there quite as much, keep a better eye on things. So lots of little things.
Any additional questions, Mr. Gearbox?
I don't believe so. One other thing, though, with our new approach in handling air quality and so forth, about the odor abatement and such, are there going to be additional expenses associated with that, or is it going to be the same as with previous year?
Yeah. The components that I can recall regarding odor abatement was your existing air scrubber, air handler, had a few cracks in it, very small cracks. Those have all been patched up. So again, there's no additional investment of time. It's just, if anything, it's a little bit more effective. And then this, this photograph that I showed, this one that's up there right now, again, that all works on existing pressure, no existing electrical investment at all involved. You just have to flush that charcoal every few weeks with a hose, basically, so.
So it's not something that has to be replaced?
That, yes. That media probably does need to be replaced every two to four years, something in that timeframe. I'd have to look up the vendor's recommendation, but it's, it's a fairly nominal cost to do that.
Okay.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbox. Any additional questions from city council members? No. Well, Brian, I appreciate the report in depth, as I would expect from an engineer who works for Tetra Tech. It is all very exciting, really, although, you know, a substantial multimillion-dollar renovation to a wastewater treatment plant doesn't always generate a lot of excitement. But for those of us who are familiar with the facility and the plant, we know that upgrades, upgrades, excuse me, were desperately needed. And I think as Mr. Gearbox alluded to in his line of questioning, this is going to approve the efficiency and safety of the facility.
Very much so.
And also help us manage some of the smell and odor issues that some of our residents have experienced in the past. And I do want to note, for those who are in the audience this evening, and those who will be reading about this meeting or watching it at home, we do apologize for any inconveniences that have been associated with this project. But again, a project of this magnitude, there are going to be delays, there are going to be inherent hardships, and I apologize for that. And I'm hopeful that we'll see a number of issues resolved when the project is completed. But I do want to remind people, it is still a wastewater treatment plant, and there will still be some issues and some odors, regrettably. But again, this is an important project for the community. It brings our wastewater treatment plant into the 21st century, and we appreciate your work.
My pleasure.
And the work that Mr. Rubel, and Mr. Skull, and a variety of other city staff members have put into this project. So thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
If there's nothing else for Mr. Rubel, then we will transition to the next part of our agenda. Thank you so much. And Chase, you can move the screen. Oh, I'm sorry. Chase, I apologize. We need the screen to stay down. Okay, moving on in the agenda, we come to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Please.
Mary Hess. It's regarding Tetra Tech. It was a wonderful presentation, but as the multimillion dollar bond was passed, it also brought cost increases to our water and sewer bill. I had asked six months ago, or maybe more, as far as if the cost of the haulers that are bringing in the sludge, if that had been reevaluated and increased also, since ours has went up appreciably. And also, a gallon of sewer sludge is about 200% stronger than a gallon of household effluent. We were told years and years ago that the sludge is really hard on the equipment as far as the gears and everything. So when we're talking about the cost being from the age and everything else, I was wondering if in fact the cost of the sludge had been also increased. One other comment, if I have time, is on the old meeting minutes, the cemetery software management. $13,000 was authorized through the cemetery board of, through the perpetual care fund for this. And what I wanted to comment, that it appears now the city, when we sell a grave or do selling points, 60% of it goes to the city, and 40% goes to the cemetery perpetual care fund. And I'm wondering if in fact there should be a cost, because we'll be looking at probably doing a road, and hopefully the church windows, if in fact that is going to be proportionately taken out of the city fund, too, since they are taking 60% for the city coffers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there additional citizen comments on agenda items? No, then we'll proceed to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem Rhodes to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I request that we remove bills for discussion, free of which, please.
Okay. So see bills would be then the first item under new business, preceding new business item 16-141. Mr. Rhodes, do you want to move to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Correct.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries you. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. We move on to public hearings, item 16 dash 140. This is special land use, uh, 1335 East Michigan Ave. Um, actually, before we, uh, move to open the public hearing, Mr. Rubel, uh, do you wanna make, uh, a comment on this issue? You don't have to, but I think it may be appropriate.
Um, I just wanted to mention that, uh, Mr. Paul Glance is here. He was the founder and president, and also, uh, Jason, uh, Jakir, who is the, would be the contractor, builder, represents the owner of the property also, and both gentlemen are here, uh, to answer questions.
Very good. Paul, uh, tell me the other gentleman's name. I'm sorry.
Jason.
Jason, I'm sorry, Jason. Gentlemen, would you like to come up and make any comment at this time? We appreciate you both being here very much.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the city council, uh, thank you very much for entertaining our, uh, matter tonight. We are delighted to be here, and, uh, as we had the pleasure of, uh, visiting with, uh, Mayor Mall at the, uh, planning commission, uh, meeting previously, uh, I can just tell you that, uh, we are, uh, very hopeful that we'll have the privilege of opening a, an Imagine Theater here to serve the fine, uh, residents of Celine and, and nearby environs. Thank you.
Paul, can I ask you the same question I asked you two weeks ago at the planning commission meeting?
Here you are.
Which is, um, for the benefit of, of city council, but also those who are in the audience this evening and who may be reading about this meeting at home, talk a little bit about the history of Imagine Theater, the strong emphasis you put on, on customer service, and the fact that, um, going to an Imagine Theater, and these are my words, not yours, is, is, uh, an experience that's sort of a step above what many of your competitors are offering.
Well, thank you again for those kind words, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Imagine is a pure Michigan company. It was, um, born out of, uh, the efforts of a couple young CPAs going back to 1989. Um, it started off as, uh, what I would characterize as a hobby business. It didn't exactly, a single-screen theater in 1989 didn't exactly support two families. But, uh, we became students of the industry, and, um, candidly, out of, uh, fear that I would lose my day job, in particular, we decided to, uh, become involved in a more robust fashion in the movie business, uh, in the mid-'90s. We opened our first movie theater in Bertrand, Michigan. It was a six-screen theater, uh, in Bertrand, as I said, in 1997, May 23, 1997, to be specific. And, uh, Cinema Hollywood started very slowly, but it, uh, it grew, uh, and, and, uh, and folks discovered us, and they were, uh, uh, we were, we've been very blessed with the support of the communities in which we've done business, and Bertrand, uh, would be first and foremost among them. We expanded Cinema Hollywood in 1999 to make it a 10-screen theater, uh, and then there was a fortuitous opportunity for us to move into the metropolitan Detroit market around the turn of the century. You see, the advent of stadium seating, something we had been at the forefront of, having opened the first all-stadium seating theater with Cinema Hollywood in 1997, was changing the landscape of the movie industry quite materially. And so, uh, we decided to get involved in the industry in a much, uh, more robust fashion, with the opening of Imagine Novi in 2002, Imagine Canton in 2004, uh, Imagine, uh, Woodhaven came along, I think about in 2005 or '06, and then, uh, we proceeded to open, uh, Imagine Rochester Hills in 2010, and Imagine Royal Oak in 2011, and again, we opened another Imagine Theater, Imagine Macomb in 2014. We're currently under construction to build a 10-screen theater in Frankfurt, Illinois, a far southwest suburb of Chicago. Uh, Imagine is, is and remains a, uh, family business, a closely-held business. We, of course, it's a capital-intensive business. We have, uh, a number of investors who have, uh, entrusted their precious capital to us, and, uh, I believe that all success in business is born out of serving one's customer or guest, client, as you will, and we've been just exceptionally fortunate that, um, you know, my job is to provide the tone from the top, is to establish essentially the, uh, the conscious of the business. And, um, you know, I went through a little of that this past weekend. Candidly, we had a guest that we didn't serve very well in Macomb Township. Uh, we flew into action and made it right with that guest by Saturday morning. Thus, I got, um, actually, uh, lauded by the guest in social media. At the end of the day, our job, again, is to offer guests an exemplary out-of-home experience. We all have fine televisions in our home, and we can all put our feet up at home when we watch a movie. And so, now, we have to not only offer those same amenities, but we have to offer you good food, good service, and our business is really about offering our guests a terrific experience. And so, that's what we hope to bring to this fine community.
I appreciate that very much. Jason, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just briefly, I'd like to say thank you on behalf of Arkin Jonah and the Jonah family. Unfortunately, Arkin would have loved to have been here tonight, but he couldn't. It was, uh, Mrs. Jonah's birthday today, so, thank you for your time.
That's a reasonable excuse. We'll accept that. Uh, are there any questions from the dais for either of these two gentlemen, or for city staff?
Just some minor questions, and I had asked the city manager, and unfortunately, we wouldn't be able to get them to you yet. Um, just, can you give them an idea of hours of operation, and whether there'll be, um, wine, beer, alcohol, or any of that type of thing, and what's the kind of atmosphere?
It, uh, it's designed to be, um, uh, Imagine's, is designed to be an upscale, uh, environment, but it's also very much, uh, important to be a family venue as well. We, um, did not pioneer serving liquor in movie theaters, but we brought it back in 1998 in Bertrand, and I'm pleased to tell you that, uh, over the many years, each and every one of our venues has had a liquor license, we have, uh, one violation over that time period, and that is that a, a bartender in Canton, uh, took an individual's license, looked at it, and apparently wasn't very good at math, because notwithstanding the fact that, that, that the license clearly indicated that the young man was under 21, she served him. So, that, so I've just shared with you our worst-case scenario in terms of, um, our liquor administration, but, uh, while we serve adult beverages, it's only about, uh, one in seven guests who actually partake. And it's, um, uh, into the hours of operation, we're typically open from about, uh, 10:30 or 11:00 in the morning, until, uh, it can run as long as, or as late as, uh, 2:00 in the morning, but that's rather unusual. You know, during the summer hours, there might be a midnight showing of a particular, uh, big opening, and so, we, we, um, uh, we will be open hours that, uh, that are extended during certain periods of time, and then during slower periods of time, of course, we'll contract our schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions, Mr. Gierba?
No.
Any other questions from the dais? And I should add, and I mentioned this at, uh, at our planning commission meeting, uh, a few weeks back, um, I am a, um, I choose to patronize Imagine Theater. Uh, in fact, I was thinking, uh, this weekend, as I was preparing for this meeting, I don't think I've gone to see another movie in the last two years that wasn't being shown at an Imagine Theater. I made the choice to do that, of course. Um, and as I noted at the last planning commission meeting, on occasion, I choose to, to purchase an, an adult beverage. And I have to say, having patronized both the Canton location and Novi, um, our guest, the CEO, is, is indeed correct. You run a pretty tight, tight ship. I mean, there are no shenanigans. Um, it is a very professional operation, um, and quite frankly, I'm surprised that you have one violation in that entire time period, because I'm, I'm amazed with how, um, precise and professional, um, and how much of an emphasis you put on, on safety and making sure you're in compliance with the law.
Well, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. You know, there's a lot of responsibility that comes along with, uh, serving alcohol, and, uh, I've had it correctly described to me that serving alcohol is a privilege, not a right, and we treat it that way. Uh, and yes, all of our bartenders go through, uh, training, as do our managers, in terms of, uh, techniques of alcohol management, and, uh, it's very, um, it's, it's not in anyone's best interest for us to over-serve guests, or to serve underage patrons. One of the, uh, the things that we've done is that we've, uh, installed, uh, surveillance cameras, particularly in our bars, and the, and the premise, candidly, is this, uh, I know from firsthand experience that folks will sometimes sneak in liquor, and, uh, and, and candidly, if a young person were to bring in liquor and, uh, become intoxicated, get in a car accident, for example, or get in some other trouble, we would, in my opinion, be presumed guilty until proven innocent. That's why it's important to me that my teammates and I all recognize that everything we're doing, uh, is on tape, that our behavior is being watched and will be subject to scrutiny by outside parties as well.
Any other questions or comments? No? Gentlemen, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're gonna proceed now to opening the public, uh, hearing on this issue, affording anyone from the public an opportunity to speak on public hearing item 16 dash 140. Is there a motion to open the public hearing at 8:11 PM?
Sold.
Moved by Councilwoman Dillon, seconded by Councilman Seo. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public hearing is now open. Uh, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak?
Uh, John Olson, Celine Area Chamber of Commerce. Um, I just wanted to come up and, and just, uh, you know, when I first took over the, the chamber, um, one of my major goals was to bring a little bit of energy or excitement down into that plaza, and to have something like this come up, um, you know, we've got 400-plus members, and there's, there's definitely an excitement buzz, uh, among the whole community, and, and as I just talked to, to people on the street, um, there's a lot of excitement about having this come here, and I just wanted to say how excited we were to have them, and how much we welcome them into our community.
Very good. Thank you, John. Appreciate that very much. Are there additional public comments? How about a motion to close the public hearing then at 8:12 PM?
Moved.
Moved by Gierba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public hearing is now closed. Uh, now, we need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 28th, 2016 memo from Celine Planning Commission, and to approve or not to approve the special land use as presented.
Move to acknowledge receipt and to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Portem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahar. Uh, any discussion? Mr. Seo.
Just a question. There's been a lot of discussion apparently about whether or not special land use goes with the property, or it goes with the, uh, the owner, the business manager at the time, and it's clear that it does go with the property. Is there any concern about this, uh, becoming, uh, theater use and, uh, staying that way, if in fact there'd be some, such a, uh, theater group that come to town?
I mean, as far as, like you said, it goes with the land. I mean, I don't know that there's a concern. I, I mean, if, if somebody from council has a concern, then, uh, but, but I don't know the staff has any concerns.
Okay. I have no concern myself. I just, because the issue had been brought up, I wondered if there was something out there that I wasn't privy to.
I'd just say, normally, with special use permits, and oftentimes, you can put a time period on it for review, and so, occasionally, we've done that in the past, and so that was kinda the question. I just didn't know what and how that would impact. Um, so, sometimes you do that just in case there's a, a use that needs to be reviewed at some point in time, and in this situation, it doesn't seem to appear that need.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Seo. Additional discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Mayor Portem Rhodes, seconded by Councilwoman Tahar, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Have a good evening. We move on to new business, um, and of course, we have an amended new business section of our agenda. The first is C bills. This will be a motion to approve the payment of bills consisting of 134 payees in the amount of $2,204,488.93 as submitted. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Seconded by Seo. Discussion, did you have a comment or question, Councilman Seo?
Yes, sir, I did.
Please.
As was previously mentioned during the citizen comments, I, too, received a telephone call at home, questioning the payment of the, uh, $8,749 item for the cemetery GIS software, uh, from the perpetual care fund. Frankly, it never occurred to me before that there might be some other way to pay for this, or some other consideration, and I guess I just would like to hear, uh, discussion. This is being paid for entirely from the perpetual care fund. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. Um, just like we do other things that, that continue to maintain, um, the, the cemetery and the service, the cemetery, uh, and the services we provide, um, long-term, um, uh, we do also, um, for instance, uh, we maintain, um, the, when we do burials and such, um, and mowing, um, we get a, a very minor contribution, um, to the general fund from the perpetual care, so that then the, the general fund takes on the lion's share of those, those costs. Uh, but this, uh, in this case, um, it certainly would qualify for a perpetual care, 100% perpetual care fund expense, uh, to, to purchase that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Anything else, Councilman Seo?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments on this? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by Seo, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, item 16 dash 141. This is Girl Scout, um, Girl Scout Gold Award Project Proposal Beautification at Taff Park. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 20th, 2016 memo from Park Commission Recording Secretary Jody Roberts, and to approve or not to approve the proposal to install paving stones around Taff's Park Vegetable Garden and create a butterfly garden.
Move to acknowledge receipt and to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Portem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. I'll let Mr. Gierba be the second on that. I'll get you next time. Ms. Tahar. Uh, Ms. Scruggs, can I turn it over to you, and you have a, a PowerPoint, I understand?
Yes, actually, um, Megan Ringel.
Megan does.
There you go.
But whenever you're ready, ladies.
I, I just wanted to introduce you to Megan. Um, she, uh, came to me a couple of months ago, and we kinda talked over a few different ideas she had for her gold project, and she made her first presentation to the Park Commission last month, and the Park Commission was very much in favor of the, of her project, so she's here today to present her idea to you and, and seek approval. So, I'll turn it over to Megan.
Thank you. Um, so, as she said, my name is Megan Ringel. Um, how do I, um, how do I present this?
I may go to slideshow, Megan?
Maybe under blue. I'm not good at this.
Slide there. Oh, what did I just do? There we go.
Keep going to slideshow.
Oh, there you go.
There should be one that says "you show," I think.
From beginning.
Or maybe not.
Click on the button. There we go. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay. There we go. Um, so, I am Megan Ringel, and so, just a little bit about me. I'm an ambassador girl scout, and I've been involved with Celine Area Girl Scouting now for 11 years, and I'm an incoming junior at Celine High School. And just a little bit of background of the gold award. Um, it was designed in 1916 and is considered the highest and most prestigious award that a girl scout can earn, and there is a time requirement of 80 hours that must be put into the project in total, and it must be sustainable for many years. Um, so, um, the project objective as a whole, um, the main issue is that it's a beautification project, um, to help making mowing around the area easier, and to make the area more easily accessible to, um, the kids that, um, like some of the day camps, they use the area to, um, learn about the area, and just, um, to bring care, kids to enjoy the area. Um, so, on the south side of the rec center, there is, um, a vegetable and flower garden, and it has two garden boxes with a compost box. And the goal is, um, there's two separate, um, projects to say, um, so, there's, what, the first project is to install brick paver stones around the pre-existing garden boxes, um, 'cause around the air, around the garden boxes, um, it's hard to mow, so there's a lot of grass and weeds around there, so, just to take that and, um, make it easier to, um, manage, we've, um, we're just gonna install paver stones around there, so, and then, along with that, there's gonna be a butterfly garden, um, to just liven up the place and make it more, um, just more pretty, I guess. Um, and so, this is the area, um, and there's the vegetables, and, um, yeah, just around, you can see, like, around, um, on the left side of the garden box, you can see there's, um, some overgrown, um, grass there, so, that would definitely just take care of that. And then, um, where the picture is taken from, there's, um, that would be where the, that would be where the butterfly, butterfly garden would be, um, located at, so it would be come frap, come down frap, from the, um, from the garden boxes in the compost box. And then, so, just a more in-depth look. Um, the paver stones would be donated by- The paver stones would be donated by Fens Builder Supply, and they would be donated as seconds to the project at no cost. And then the overall land area that I'm planning is about 150 square feet. And then the addition will make this easier to mow and more accessible to visitors and users of the vegetable garden. And then for the butterfly garden, it's supposed to be installed around, or adjacent to the garden boxes, and there's gonna be plants and flowers installed there, such as the Shasta daisies and the swamp milkweed and other plants. And then we're gonna be laying down landscape fabric and mulch to prevent weed growth so that there won't be as much maintenance. And so that, the maintenance will be very simple, also because there will be perennials that will install, so they'll keep popping up each year. And then this is just a little schematic that I drew up, so just to give an overview of what it would look like. So there would be the butterfly garden and then the compost box around it, or sorry, the pavers around the three boxes, and then there would be mulch around the tree. So my reason is just to, whether or not this would get approved or not. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Megan. We appreciate your presentation and your interest very much. Are there questions for the applicant? Mr. Rhodes?
Megan, I certainly like your proposal and what you're gonna do, and it's gonna dress up that area. One concern that I had was with the butterfly bush, because if it's happy in that location, it can get to be really large and might overpower the rest of your plants. And so I just ask that you might consider replacing that with some other butterfly-friendly plant.
Okay. Yeah, that could definitely be a consideration.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Mr. Seale, please.
I just am gratified that the community benefits from the efforts of young people like yourself who strive to achieve the higher goals in scouting, and I thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you.
Also, is that Mrs. Van Beeren I see sitting there?
It is.
My daughter, many years ago, also at Mrs. Van Beeren as a scout leader. Glad to see you're still with the program.
I'm addicted.
Yeah, she's my gold scout, gold award advisor, so.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Seale. Any additional questions or comments? Well, Megan, thank you very much. Appreciate your time. I do not believe we need the screen anymore. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. So the screen can be raised. Thank you, Chase. Megan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on new business item 16-141, which was moved by Rhodes, seconded by Gearbaugh to acknowledge receipt and to approve? No, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 16-142. This is Brecken Park Library Trail renaming recommendation. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 20, 2016 memo from Parks Commission Recording Secretary Jody Roberts and to approve or not to approve the plan to rename the Brecken Library Trail to the Leslie Neathammer Memorial Trail in honor of Leslie Neathammer.
Moved to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman McClellan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gearbaugh. Ms. Scruggs, would you like to comment on this along with some of our friends from the Celine District Library?
Yes, actually, I'm going to just say a couple of words and then let our new library director say a few things. But this came before the Park Commission last month, and they unanimously recommended the, the suggestion from the Celine Friends of the Library, I believe.
The Library Board.
Library Board, I'm sorry, had made this recommendation. And they thought it was very appropriate, a nice tribute. I feel this was a very well-deserved renaming. You know, Leslie Neathammer was very passionate about fitness, and I believe she would also say that all paths lead to the library, so I think this would be a really nice thing. And I'm gonna turn it over to Mary Ellen.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Mary Ellen Mulcrone, honored to be the new library director. And I don't have a lot to add, but I just wanted to say that the Library Board had been looking for an appropriate way to honor the memory of Leslie Neathammer, who served as our library director for 27 years. And they considered a lot of suggestions, and the one that was favored by all was this renaming idea. And it seems very fitting because of the things that Carla said, and also, well, related, just that the trail symbolizes making connections between the library and the community, and Leslie was very well-known for that. So with that being said, the Library Board requests city council's approval for the renaming.
Very good. First of all, congratulations on your new position.
Thank you very much.
And we appreciate your time this evening, as well as yours, Ms. Scruggs. Are there any questions or comments on this item? We'll start with Ms. Tahar and then move to Councilmember Seale.
So I would, I would just add, as a fairly longtime member of the Friends of the Library, while the Friends were not involved in, in the creation of the trail or in making this suggestion, I do know the, something of the history of this trail, as Leslie had reported on it to us over the years on the, on the Friends Board. And I know that she was one of the driving forces behind the creation of this trail in, in its current, in its current form. Other attempts had been made by the city to put a trail in this general area, but it was really, I believe that it was really the library's work that, and using the library land that made the trail actually possible. So I think this is a very appropriate naming.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar. Mr. Seale?
Yes, I ask a simple question, certainly not to denigrate this effort at all, because I think it's a wonderful idea that this trail be named after Leslie. However, I would ask, is there a city policy as regards naming of public ways, streets, buildings, and so on, that should be referred to when people come with these kinds of suggestions?
There may be. We can certainly look into that. It's not, wouldn't be unique to have that. I mean, we, but we, certainly we have not applied that policy to this one nor the recent one for the former Depot Trail. Staff can certainly, can certainly look into it.
Please, if you could. And perhaps report back. I'm just, I'm curious, and I think that sometimes these efforts sometimes maybe need some guidance, too, so.
I'm not, I think it's an excellent question, Councilman Seale. I'm not aware that we do have a policy. I think there's been sort of an informal rule filed in the past to name certain things after former mayors. But even, even there, we haven't done it, we haven't applied that universally to all of the mayors. In fact, our two most recent mayors don't have anything named after them. So we can, we can, staff can check on that and report back.
Very good. Thank you.
Additional comments on this motion? Mr. Rhodes, please.
I just wanted to thank the Library Board for bringing this request forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bertem. Any other comments, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just one question. Did we have, we had Depot in the other one. We don't have library in this one. I kinda, I don't know if you don't. I would thought maybe we could include library in it, just because it helps identify kind of where it is. If anybody felt that that would be something that we would just include in Memorial Library Trail, similar to how we did with Wayne Clement's Memorial Depot Trail. It helps identify where that trail is. That was kind of my idea, not to take away from Leslie's naming, but it just sort of benefits the individual to figure out where it actually is.
I'm pretty confident that the Library Board would not object to that.
Okay.
We could certainly check on it, but.
Right. Well, what's your pleasure, Mr. Gearbaugh? You, you seconded the motion. Ms. McClellan moved it. We could follow a more formal process in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, but if there's broad consensus from the group to just insert the word "library" into the name, I don't think that that is that controversial or complex, so.
I'm okay with that.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, I kinda like that idea, just because it recognizes both her library and the contribution to getting that trail to go to the library.
So it would be named then the Leslie Neathammer Memorial Library Trail.
Correct.
Is everyone clear on that? Okay. Then that change will be made to the motion without objection. Again, just to be clear, you don't object, Ms. McClellan?
No.
Nor does Mr. Gearbaugh, since he seconded it and offered the suggestion. Any additional comments? Well, let me just say, I think that this is perfectly fitting and appropriate and a marvelous way to honor somebody who worked tirelessly for our library, but also for the entire community.
Yes.
And I think it's, like I said, fitting and symbolic and a great way to honor her legacy. So kudos to you and your board for suggesting this and for also thinking and discerning about what would be a good way to honor her legacy.
And can I just add that?
Please.
The Friends of the Library also are very supportive of it, and we would hope to, if this all is approved, we would hope to have some kind of a rededication ceremony and provide new signage, and the Friends of the Library have offered to support that for us.
Good. Well, and I would encourage you, if you haven't already, to check out the rock and plaque that was dedicated and veiled on July 4th, or around July 4th, excuse me, behind the Depot to honor Wayne Clements that Mr. Gearbaugh mentioned before, because it's really tastefully done and looks really nice.
Okay.
So might be something to consider.
Mm-hmm.
But keep us in the loop about that.
All right.
Okay. Is there anything further then on this motion? Mr. Rhodes, please.
We should also thank the Parks Commission for approving the request and bringing it to us.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Extend your, our thanks, Carla, to your colleagues on that board, okay? Thank you. If there's nothing further, please note that we have inserted the word "library" after Memorial Trail, so we changed the name ever so slightly, but it's been moved by McClellan, seconded by Gearbaugh to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We move on to new business item 16-143. This is community event, changes to Oktoberfest. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Oktoberfest Community Event application from Celine Main Street Director Riley Hollenbach and to approve or not to approve the changes to Oktoberfest Community Event.
Moved to acknowledge and to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. Rebecca, Mrs. Snyder, are you speaking on this?
I am.
Wonderful. Well, the floor is yours if you'd like to make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. We are back at your doorstep again to ask for approval for Oktoberfest. This year's event is largely just like last year's event in terms of entertainment lineup, layout, schedule. We thought it was not the year to change things up too much, so there's not a lot of changes, and we hope that you will approve our request. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Very good. Is there any questions for, for our guest? Ms. Dillon?
Is there a contingency plan for road construction? Will the road be done by then? That area?
Which part of the road?
Let's stick with the general area.
South Ann Arbor Street?
Yes, South Ann Arbor.
We, we do hope that South Ann Arbor Street will be done by then. We have been told that it's a priority to get that section of the road done so that we can continue with our events, but I don't have any knowledge about whether it will actually be done, given the delay in the construction schedule.
But you don't have a plan to move the event?
No. No, much like Summer Fest, we're going, we're going ahead right where we always have been.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I would say is regarding the construction, you know, we should be well beyond, we should be on the north side at that point. If we're not, we're gonna have larger problems than having a party. So yes, it should be, we should be on the north side, and that South Ann Arbor and parking lot four should be, should be available and prepared to move forward.
Anything further, Ms. Dillon?
My other question is, is 12 the same number of portageons you had last year?
It is the same number that we had last year. We increased our portageons significantly last year, and while there was still a wait at times, we did not feel it was an extraordinary wait during the busy times. We didn't have any complaints from the restaurants last year that people were coming inside to use the restrooms, which was the key indicator, which made us bump it up.
Thank you.
Mr. Seale, did you have a question, sir?
Just a comment. I'm pleased to see that in your application, when you described the event, you say it's a community event, celebrating our sister-city relationship with Lindenburg.
Yes.
Being a part of the Lindenburg Board, I'm pleased to see that kind of recognition and support.
I'm always looking for ways to put more culture into our event. We struggle to find dance groups that time of year because they get very busy and booked up, but any way we can put more German culture into the event and celebrate that friendship, those are the things that I always am striving for.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? No? Rebecca, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
We appreciate your support. We couldn't do the event without the city's help.
Thank you. Well, appreciate your leadership and all of the volunteers from Celine Main Street and the community to make it possible.
Thank you.
The feeling is mutual. If there's no further discussion, it's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by McClellan to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 16-144. This is design bid professional services agreement for Phase 16-1 and 16-2 of Salt Springs Park Development. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 21, 2016 memo from the Evaluation Committee and to approve or not to approve the recommendation to award the design and bid professional services agreement to Beckett and Rader in the amount of $17,750. Is there a motion?
Moved to acknowledge, receive and to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Bertem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Seale. Who wants to take the lead on this?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. John Beckett, partner in Beck and Rader, is here tonight to, to answer questions, anything regarding his firm. And also, Mr. Jim Peters is here tonight, and Jim was probably the major, major motiv- motivation behind the whole idea of Salt Springs Park. And there's been a lot of territory covered here since 2012 that ended with the dedication of the park about a year and a half ago. So the, the prospect remained at that time to obtain funds, and Carla did obtain a CARES grant, and we have city funds dedicated to initiate the design and construction of Phase 16-1 and the concept design and some documents that we could use for bidding on 16-2. As soon as we would know or realize what the cost of that might be, and then we can consider budgeting for 16-2, maybe that would be an FY18 item. We received three good quotations that were requests sent out to several firms, six had interest, three actually provided proposals. We're very fortunate that Beck and Rader has a long history of designing items for commercial, residential, municipal, and school projects in Celine. Certainly, we have a long history and experience with them. They're also very adept at streetscapes, master plans, and other types of park projects, so they also gave us the best, the best proposal, as you can see, for value. The committee, selection committee involved three staff members. Once it's awarded and executed, we would probably want to expand that committee and work on concept designs with Beckett and Rader after we have a kickoff meeting. And then the idea would be to find a plan that suits what the goals and objectives are for Salt Springs Park, per both our master plan and all the groundwork laid by Jim Peters, to cover the history and all the significant events that may have transpired down there. Once a good concept plan is developed, we'll visit with the Parks Commission and also may make a visit here, maybe a joint meeting with them and the Planning Commission would be helpful. And so with that, we would request approval of the proposal with Beckett and Rader, and Mr. Beckett can answer questions if you have those regarding his, his firm's design capabilities.
Okay. Our two guests, Mr. Beckett and Mr. Peters, do you, gentlemen, do you care to make any comment at this time?
Go ahead.
All right. And then we'll open it up for questions from the group.
I'm John Beckett, and...
I'm John Beckett and it's a pleasure to be back working for the city of Celine again. Some of you may know, some of you may not know, that I've been a resident of Celine and the area since 1963 and our firm has had the privilege of executing many projects, many public projects in the Celine area, the last of which was the renovation of Henny Field and then before that, the Celine City Library property and of course, the senior high school campus on Campus Boulevard. My first residence was on Woodingham Court, which coincidentally butts the Salt Springs property, so I have kind of a historical interest in that area and I can remember actually walking the property in those years long gone by. So we will give it our best and we owe it to the city of Celine, I think both my firm and myself, to give you the best job possible, which we will do.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir. Mr. Peters, do you want to make any comment at this time?
I'm a little bit familiar with Beckett and Raider and I'm sure they'll do a fine job. I think that the Salt Springs Park is uniquely located. It's right between Curtis Wilderness and the new Leslie D. Hammer Celine River Preserve, so it's a unique location to connect all our parks together and it'll give us a very nice park arrangement here in town. And also, it's a unique park in Celine where it'll be a history trail. It'll stay largely as it is, as a primitive piece of property, with a history walk-in trail to help educate people in town about how we were named Celine. Celine gets its name from natural salt springs. There's a salt spring on that property and the other major small salt springs were in and around that piece of property, so it's exciting to see some progress being made on the park. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there questions for either Mr. Rubel, Mr. Peters, or Mr. Beckett? We'll start with Mr. Gearbaugh.
Just a couple. Gary, when you refer to this budget for the $17,750, is that part of the $55,000 that's allocated this year?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it was part of that non-in addition. And the other thing, with the eight-foot proposed trail that's identified here, is that already cleared out as a result of construction that's been happening with the fence and everything or when I look at the design?
Okay. Phase one work is that segment that runs from Monroe Street up to the park, which is the entrance and access point. The first thing the park needs is a formal entrance and some parking area, so that's the first, that part is easily designed and constructed and would fit the need for Phase one. And then the Phase 16-2 is the part inside the park, which is probably a more passive limestone trail, but the paved portion will get you to the park. And the reason that has to be paved is because it's on the embankment along the Celine River, so it'll be a very nice scenic walkway, like a riverwalk going back to the park. So we were taking advantage of the benefits of a riverwalk also. So Phase one will be paved and then it'll be up to the gate that gets into Salt Springs Park. Then the concepts will come back about what the final design would look like inside the park and then we'll have to budget for that for the following year.
So if we build this parking lot, is it a parking lot to nowhere? I'm wondering, how are we gonna get, so we build a parking lot, what trail is there currently to get back to the area?
Well, it'll get into the Phase one, which Mr. Peters worked on Phase one, it was a scout project. So there is about 150 or so feet going into the park now. That's the limestone trail. It has a sort of a kiosk and some information on it, so people can go in to a certain point and do a little observation and they'll get an idea then, you know, that would be extended with the next phase.
So the issue is that when it says 470 here, you're saying that already 150 feet exists and then we're extending it another 320 at some point?
Right. We would go as far as possible as funds and grants would allow. The intent also is to try to obtain more grant money that's available for, you know, this type of development.
Yeah, that was gonna be my next question.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Additional questions? Ms. McClellan?
Kinda goes along with that. I'm concerned that if we have a parking lot and you only have a certain amount of trail, are people gonna go into the trail and then, is that a liability issue for the city to have a park that essentially is just wild area?
No, I mean, the parking lot wouldn't change the liability issue. I mean, all parks are covered under general riders' insurance, so there's the umbrella regardless of where you go in the city, which park. I believe Mr. Campbell knows the details, but I don't see where it would increase anything because we have parks along rivers and, you know, this, different natures and different kinds of trails and it really is no different than basically any other park.
Just be concerned that people are gonna park there thinking there's, you know, a series of trails there and there's, if there would be some signage or something there that says, you know, don't go, don't go past here or if you don't care if they go past there, I don't know.
Yeah.
Does it matter?
We're not gonna put up a sign that there's a series of trails because there won't be.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess what I would add is that, you know, it's, you know, we've been working on this conceptual park here for a number of years now, trying to, again, phase it, do a phased approach because of lack of funds and so we have to start at someplace. There's not, currently, there's not a good place to park and enter and so we need to develop that, so it's, you know, it's gonna be, just as it's proposed here by staff, it's gonna have to be developed in phases and so, but without, again, you know, I guess our recommendation is to be prepared for the future development as opposed to have it developed and then not have a place for people to park and to enjoy it.
Good, Ms. McClellan?
Yep.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Rhodes, did you have a comment or question, sir?
Will the new parking spaces be paved asphalt?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Additional questions? Mr. Har.
Yes, I'm assuming, but I'd like to hear some detail about the planning for the development of the park and preserving the possible archaeology, the sites that have possible archaeological interest. Maybe Mr. Peters or Mr. Beckett would have some detail about that or how is that being accounted for?
We did cover that in the proposal that, and we did present all the prior documentation that was brought forth through the Parks Commission, through the City Council, things that Mr. Peters drafted, those are all part of the basis of design for the concepts. So all those will be elements of the design.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Comments? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just one more. Considering that we really don't have parking for People's Park and knowing now that it's all fenced, is there any possibility of having a trail that would lead to People's Park or is it all fenced in and we don't have enough right of way to do that?
There are some severe grade issues there, you know, with the hillside and so that would be very costly and I don't think the neighbors would appreciate the tree removal between them and the plant. So we did look at that, we thought about it, we can revisit that again, but from people I've looked at it over the years and, you know, it seemed to be quite a challenge.
Just trying to think of a cost-effective way to do it.
Yeah. It probably had to be like an elevated walkway going into the wastewater plant and around the hill.
Got it.
You know, I've walked that and taken pictures and it's pretty challenging.
Any additional questions or comments? Gentlemen, Mr. Rubel, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Transition, is there any discussion on this motion?
Just one other. I'm not sure if we've always planned on Wilderness Park parking lot to always be a gravel lot and that seems like we're doing this one. I know we're trying to get this going, but it seems like this park all of a sudden got a lot of attention and we haven't been putting that towards that parking lot, which I know has not been paved and didn't know if we're attempting to try and keep that one a more of a natural parking lot or if we have that scheduled to be considered for pavement at some point. I mean, one of my concerns is when we look at this, when we pave things, it's great to have a paved parking lot, but it's also taking away from some of the wilderness aspect that's there, so.
My guess with Wilderness Park, from what I noticed, and I don't claim to be an individual who patronizes or visits that park on many occasions, but most people who use Wilderness Park would use the street parking.
Most people do use the street parking and it seems like that lots since we acquired it's become a staging area for a lot of the construction projects.
Yeah, that's kind of the problem. I've heard concerns about that.
Any comment?
Yeah.
Vega lot we purchased from the church was never adopted as part of the park and so it's been and remained as an open use, such as the 207 Monroe we purchased. We didn't designate it a park, you know, but people thought it would be, but it was never intended to be a park and so the parking lot never was designated for, as part of Wilderness Park, the gravel lot.
Yeah, and that's, I know, because when I was on, I was on council when we purchased it with the idea that potentially that would be somehow incorporated into that park as part of it to provide parking, so we didn't have all the on-street parking, so I just didn't know where it was in our plan for the future.
Anything else? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Rhodes, excuse me, seconded by Seo to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 16-145. This is patrol vehicle purchase. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 20th, 2016 memo from Police Chief Rennick and to approve or not to approve the purchase of a 2017 Ford Utility Police Interceptor, all-wheel-drive police vehicle from Signature Ford and equip the vehicle as recommended in an amount not to exceed $34,957.90.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Seo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahr. Chief Rennick, would you like to make a comment on your memo dated July the 20th?
The only comment I'd like to make is that we normally had bought Tahos for the last five years, but the price of Tahos have gone sky-high. The same equipped vehicle would be about $10,000 more. I had the opportunity to look at the Ford vehicles at other neighboring police departments as well as at my conferences. It's a comparably sized vehicle and I'm actually very excited about it because it's an all-wheel drive, which certainly will help during the winter time.
So then it's our intent at the moment then to purchase Ford vehicles in the future and eventually phase out our use of Tahos?
Yes, because of, purely because of the price. I know the officers do like the Tahos, but because of the price, they're just becoming unaffordable.
Okay. Are there questions for Chief Rennick? Mr. Seo and then Ms. Dillon?
How does the amount compare to the amount that was budgeted? Oh, I see, $35,000. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Answer your own question. There's nothing wrong with that. Ms. Dillon?
I wanted to ask, the cost of the Tahoe, would it balance out with the fact that you would not have to buy the equipment to outfit it?
Well, a lot of the equipment that's on the Tahoe that's gonna be traded out will transfer over to the Ford. There are some pieces like the screen, the backseat, those things would have to be new. It's unknown actually, though, if the model year 2012 would fit the 2017. I don't know that answer, I'm sorry.
And is there an aftermarket, is there a secondary market for those pieces that come out of the Tahoe?
We could certainly always ask and we have a listserv available saying we have this available and.
I just know for a long time, like with the Crown Vics, you used to be able to Frankenstein them all back together again.
Right.
And so it just seems when you're just switching vehicles and brands and manufacturers, you lost all of that ability.
A lot of times they change, they change just enough so you can't do that. Matter of fact, we couldn't put some of the stuff from our 2012 on our 2015 Tahoe because they changed the design of it and it wouldn't fit, so I don't know if that would happen or not. I doubt it.
Okay. And can you just reiterate for people that are watching, why you get vehicles that are only, you know, four or five years old, $90,000, that they're different than street vehicles? Because I know there's been a lot of questions about why we replace our vehicles so often.
Sure. Well, they're driven 24 hours a day, you know, seven days a week and there's a lot more miles on it than there are miles. They have a lot of hours on them that are, by idling, that doesn't necessarily show up in the miles, so they have a lot of wear and tear on them. So a five-year-old police vehicle probably would be closer to 10 years old.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Additional questions for Chief Rennick? Mr. Rhodes?
Does the price from Great Lakes Emergency Products include the graphics?
No, it doesn't.
Who puts that on?
I know this, but I can't answer it. It's a local company that puts our graphics on and we actually get a fairly good price to that. It's roughly $500 to get the graphics put on.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions? Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any subsequent discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Councilmember Seo, seconded by Councilwoman Tahr, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 16-146. This is historic markers, excuse me. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 27th, 2016 memo from Parks and Rec. Director Scruggs and to approve or not to approve the wording for the Salt Springs Historic Marker.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahr. Ms. Scruggs, do you care to make any comment?
Actually, yes. Thank you. I've asked Mr. Peters to come join me. In my memo, I did at the bottom acknowledge Mr. Peters. He's done a majority of the work and working with the state to come up with the wording for the historical marker, so we did receive the final draft from the state after they've gone back and forth, I think, three times. Just, I mean, they nitpick every single word to make sure that it is accurate and historically correct and everything. So this is the final wording and we're asking for approval. Mr. Peters, would you like to?
It's been a labor of love, but it's got a long road ahead.
Thank you. Thank you both. Are there questions for either Mr. Peters or for Director Scruggs? Mr. Har.
I have a comment. I just wanted to say, as a member of the Arts and Culture Committee, which has been involved in the discussions and is providing some of the funding for the marker, I want to compliment Mr. Peters on his persistence and dedication to this because it has been very long and very arduous and there are a few of us who saw just a little bit of how hard that was and I just want to say, well done.
Thank you, Ms. Har. Additional questions or comments? Thank you both, we appreciate your efforts very much.
All right.
Thank you. If there's nothing further on this motion, we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Tahr, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up, our Commission, Committee, and Task Force reports from Councilmembers. Mr. Rhodes?
The Environmental Commission will be staffing, providing and staffing a recycling game for the youngsters at Henny Field during the Summer Fest that's on this Saturday coming up, similar to what we did last year and the kids really enjoyed it and they actually learned a bit about the recycling codes, which we hope they transmitted that information then to their parents.
Very good. Any additional Commission, Committee, or Task Force reports? No, how about reports or other announcements? Mr. Gearbaugh?
I would just like to let the public know that the Celine era Historical Society will be having their garage sale this weekend on the 12th, Friday, and on Saturday, so please come out and help support the Historical Society. Also, Summer Fest is this weekend. Might as well put that plug in at this point, too.
Yep. Hope to see everyone on Friday night and all day and into the evening on Saturday, Uptown Celine or Downtown Celine, rather, one of our signature events and we'll pray for good weather, even though we need the rain. Are there other reports or announcements? Mr. Seo?
Just a quick one. I was in communication with Mr. Peter Fein from the Lindenbergs side of the Celine Lindenberg Friendship Group. They are looking at trying to organize the 2017 visit for the first two weeks in October with perhaps a side trip to Garmrich, Parden, Carrigan, and Innsbruck, Austria. So I put that out there for people's information. Pretty soon, we're going to begin soliciting people who might be interested in going to Germany on this trip. They would like to know how many people are coming so that they can prepare accordingly. So just as an announcement for people to keep that in mind, pretty soon, we'll be trying to contact folks via our contacts we have via email. So that should be forthcoming.
Very good.
And the Elsa Wanted to Know if the mayor was going to?
I hope to be there.
Very good.
All right. Reports, any other reports or announcements? No? All right, well, let's transition then to Community Service Police Officer, Mr. Campbell. Do you want to start this one? And we have Superintendent Grayden and Chief Rennick, who I think will also be addressing this, and I think you're looking for some consensus at the end of this, is that correct?
Well, sure, at least, if nothing else, at least to begin the discussion.
Okay.
So if Chief Rennick and Mr. Grayden could, could approach and have some, some discussion, and I know Scott, Scott had contacted me a while back, and we talked about the possibility of, of having a similar community services type officer in the schools within the corporate limits of the city, similar to how they, Pittsfield has an officer at the high school. And so we've talked about it a little bit, and so I know Scott, Scott can certainly add to that and what his, his thoughts and desires might be.
Sure. First of all, thank you for the opportunity. One of the things that we've talked about for really a long time is the historic partnership between the Celine Police Department and Celine Area Schools. And it's transitioned a little bit over the last 10 or 12 years when we've had the new site in, in Pittsfield, and we've seen the benefits of, of working collaboratively with a school resource officer. Now, the operations that we have inside the city of Celine are a little bit different than the high school and some of the aspects that are presented at the high school. But we've had the conversation internally, would it make sense for us to have a similar position within Celine Area Schools that would service certainly Liberty School, including our Alternative High School, the middle school, as well as the elementary buildings? And, and looking at beyond the, not only the, from a resource standpoint, community policing standpoint, but ultimately also from the aspect of team, a program we rolled out last year and has been seen as very successful in addition to other programs. So we began the conversation, I wanted to, to talk with, with City Manager Campbell about that opportunity, and so we've begun those discussions.
You want to add anything? Just Chief Rennick?
I'll just, I'll just take questions, but we're certainly excited about the idea of having an officer in the schools. That's certainly a good thing for our community, a good thing for the schools, a good thing for the police department.
Want to add anything else?
Well, one thing I would say is that we're a little bit different as far as staffing needs, at least my understanding, and Scott maybe can, can, can add to this if need be. But I know, for instance, in Pittsfield, they have, their department is large enough that they just absorb that officer being in, at the high school. We unfortunately don't have that luxury, so we would, it would need, we would need, you're talking at least nine months out of the year currently, or maybe longer as, as the, the school year seems to be getting longer. But, so that officer would be dedicated. Well, we would need to continue our, at our full level, service level, we would need to replace that. And so what we had proposed, again, we would, we had proposed a cost-neutral, cost, or proposed a cost-neutral approach in order to do this if, if the city council and the school were wanting to go forward with it.
Well, let me just say before we open it up for discussion, and I appreciate Mr. Campbell's comments, and his sentiments mirror mine, which is, I've said this ad nauseam. The standard in the city of Celine should be a dispatcher, two officers, and a supervisor on every single shift. That's not only good for our public's safety and well-being, that's also good for our officer's safety. So we're not at a staffing level where, like Mr. Campbell said, we can absorb that. The only way to do that would be to, to mix up that rotation and to diminish the ratio that I talked about. So I think it's a marvelous idea, I think it would ultimately be beneficial for Celine Area Schools, but also for the city. And I'm supportive of it. Like Mr. Campbell, I'd like it to be as revenue-neutral as, as possible. I recently got an email from the mayor of Ann Arbor, and I liked one of his lines, which was on an issue that was not germane to public safety, which is that without sound fiscal management and proper use of tax dollars, nothing is sustainable. So that, that's sort of my approach on a number of issues, including this one. So I think it's a, a good idea if you can make the numbers work, and I'm happy to encourage you and offer whatever support I can to keep the conversation going. But of course, I'm interested in hearing what my, what my council colleagues have to say on this issue as well. Mr. Rhodes, you want to start it off, and we'll work our way down this side of the dais and then move to the right?
Sure. If there is a way that a police officer is provided, how would you envision that individual working, since there are multiple buildings that need to be staffed? And what would they do?
I'll go up in front of that standpoint. Certainly, from our perspective and Mr. Campbell, we would want them present when our students are present, so you can think of it from a school year perspective. In addition, we have some summer programming that we would want their presence at, and we would work through that. But our, the plan would be that they would largely be in the central campus area, obviously servicing our middle school and our element, or primarily our Alternative High School, meaning present in the building, working with students, visible before and after school. During the school day, their presence would be really expected to be in a variety of locations scheduled out throughout the buildings, providing team lessons. I don't know the acronym for team, but essentially providing, essentially leadership lessons, respect lessons that would be delivered to students in the K3 buildings that reside in the city of Celine as well as Heritage Elementary, and then again, things at the middle school and high school.
And the reason for this needing to be a police officer as opposed to a private security person or somebody on staff who has that kind of training?
We feel it's just, it's, it's a better model. The model has worked well for us in Pittsfield in terms of having a uniformed officer onsite during the school day. Presence, one of the things that we discussed about was having that, them with a car, a car that would be parked visibly, given their location, again, to make sure people understand that we do have a true partnership between the police department, local police department, and the school system.
So that this, presence of this person would also provide a sense, greater sense of security for the kids while they're in the, in the schools because of the visibility of a...
That's, that would be certainly something we would hope would happen, yes.
Side benefit? Okay, thank you.
Generally supportive of the concept, Mayor Portem?
I am.
Okay, very good. Mr. Gearboz?
Yeah, I think we attempted to try and do something like this when we had grant funding in the past, and that was what actually ended up drying up, and unfortunately, we weren't able to do it at that point. I do know and wonder how when we had the DARE program and kind of pulled that back and how that was redistributed, how those efforts and things were reassigned, and I guess not understanding what we currently do and what we don't do. From a perspective of having more safety and more visibility of a police officer so that there's more confidence and, and less, what we're afraid of now is having the aspect of individuals seeing police officers as not being there as they're need, I can see that benefit for us and help to try and encourage our community to be more police-friendly and police-oriented. But as in terms of how to budget it in and everything, I think it is kind of a cooperation of bringing both the school's support and the city's support, and so I would like to see a shared process also.
Ms. McClellan?
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I think it's a great resource for both the city and the schools. I think security issues being what they are, I know the schools are working really hard on updating all the security at each of the buildings. I think this is just an added level that's really important nowadays, and I think if we can find a way to do it fiscally and for both parties, I think it's a great idea.
Ms. Tarr?
Yes, I'm, I'm very much in favor of the concept. I see a lot of benefits for every part of the community in this. And of course, the question is how to make, how to do it sustainably is the key question, I think. But conceptually, yes, absolutely. I think it's, it's very much, very worth pursuing.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Dillon?
I think it is worth pursuing. I do have some concerns of whether it's a staggered schedule, whether it's a consistent schedule, because what you don't want to have is the kids know, oh, there's nobody in this building on Tuesdays. And so I think it would have to be much more spontaneous than that so that they feel like there's always a presence even when it's not there, just having one. Because I know that is sort of an issue right now with the whole district nurse concept of you have a nurse, but she's not necessarily there at, you know, any given time, which I understand that's, you know, it's totally a vegetarian thing, and this is the same issue. So that's my only concern is to whether it would actually be any sort of a deterrent or whether it would become a non-issue.
I, I comment on that real quickly. We tell our officers to make sure that they don't do things routinely, you know, don't always drive out of the parking lot the same way, don't always leave at the same time. The same thing would be true with the school. They wouldn't always be at the middle school on Wednesdays, they may be there on Tuesdays, they may show up on Thursdays. Just depending on what's happening in the other programs, you'll never know when they're going to be there. And I think that's, that would take, hopefully take care of that problem that you're concerned about.
Thank you.
Last but certainly not least, Mr. CEO?
Well, I certainly have a lot to say about a subject like this. Suffice it to say that I think it's a great idea. When I was in Ann Arbor Police Department, I commanded the two high school liaison officers we had there. It always worked to the benefit, not only of the school system and of the children in the school, but also the police department. When there was an incident, it helped having the officers know who the players were, who the staff was. It wasn't a face walking in cold, there was a trust that had been established. It really is kind of the essence of community policing. And that was what our, our, our recent consultants suggested, that we try to make an effort to do more of. This is but one small way to do that. And again, I'm, I share the same concerns of the others, and that is, how are we going to pay the bill?
I believe, unless I'm mistaken, that you have the consensus that you're looking for. It seems like everyone's on board with the idea conceptually, it's just making the numbers work. Mr. Grayden, is it your prerogative and the prerogative of your board to get somebody in place for this upcoming school year?
It wouldn't happen that fast, I'll be honest. It is on the agenda for us as a discussion item tomorrow night. That's the first time the board will be talking about it in, in a group setting, and so we'll be kind of evaluating their opinions. They're going to have some, probably some of the same comments, and largely, I think, my discussions individually with them so far is largely supportive. However, I think the financial piece would need to be looked at, and from a sustainable scenario in terms of probably a multi-year agreement initially so that this planning can occur. Because they're, they don't have quite the scale that Pittsfield has, there'll be kind of a, a backfill scenario, and so it's our, would be our impression that we likely would be starting more of a mid-year, mid-school year, maybe a more of a calendar year function for the current one and allow time for people to transition effectively. There's also some training that would likely take place associated with this school.
So if everything goes, if everything proceeds on its current trajectory, you're looking at probably the beginning of 2017?
That would be my impression.
All right. So obviously, your board will have a discussion tomorrow night, you'll work with, with staff here, either the city manager or police chief, and I would assume we'll hear something, maybe bring this back as a discussion item, or maybe even at a work meeting sometime in the next month, month and a half or two months?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Anything else from the group? No? Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Before I go, I do want to pass along in working with city manager, we toured our facilities tonight and, and work is progressing. The city staff has done an excellent job of making sure that we continue to stay on schedule. I know, I do appreciate that. I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, on the discussion portion of our agenda, old mod tracks, the Arts and Culture Committee. Ms. Tarr, do you want to take the lead on this?
Yes, thank you. So, and the July 20th meeting of the Arts and Culture Committee, Mr. Alhaj, who's here, visited the committee with a proposal from the Rotary to start the process of creating a sculpture using some of the old mod tracks and the sculpture. I'll let, if he's willing to come up and talk about what their idea is, I won't try to, try to paraphrase his words. And what he asked the committee to do was to help find, or to find, an artist and also to approach the city, first of all, to find out is city council in favor of this idea? How much track might be available? Could some be, is there sufficient quantity available? And would the city consider, or would city council consider making track available without for, at no cost to the artist for the sculpture, for the proposed sculpture?
Before I, we, I yield the floor to our guests, let us confirm with the city manager, besides the pre-cut sections that are in the copy room just, just to the north of the front counter, do we have any sections still at DPW?
We do. So we actually, we have a, we have a pile, if you will, that's been set aside and handpicked by the Historical Society for their, for their project, the Depot Museum. And then we also have put aside, we heard some of this potential request from the, from the Rotary Club and, and Arts and Culture, and so there's, there's ample track available for some sort of a sculpture.
Okay, very good. My apologies.
No, no problem. Evening, my name's Alhaj, I'm here to represent the Rotary Club of Celine. Yes, we've expressed an interest to the Arts and Culture Committee, that we would help support a project that would find a benefit of a use of a historical purpose, I guess, to use these tracks in a, in a way that would be acceptable to the city. And our thoughts, we're not the creative minds artistically, we'd certainly let the Arts and Culture Committee do that, but our purpose would be to help support it financially. And if we were going to do a contest with a local artist, or if we needed to help support this in the actual construction and building of it, as well as the placement of the, of the design. So I'm here just to tell you, we're willing to put that effort forth for the city for the use of these tracks, and I guess you need to take it from here.
Very good. Well, I should also note that in addition to Councilwoman Tarr and Councilwoman McClellan serving on the Arts and Culture Committee, we also have Krista Mitchell and Cynthia Baxter. So you guys actually have a working majority here tonight. You may, you may want to meet when we're, we're done. I, I, first of all, I want to thank you for attending the meeting and for making a generous offer. I think it's a marvelous idea if there can be a partnership between a local artist or local artists, the Rotary Club and our own Arts and Culture Committee to utilize some of the existing track to make a, a public display. I don't have any objections to that, nor do I want to micromanage. I think it's a great thing to turn over to, to the Arts and Culture Committee to work on, so I'm supportive of it and supportive of using whatever we've set aside at DPW to be, to be used in this, this initiative. But obviously, I think I know where you stand on this, Ms. Tarr?
Yes, could I just?
Please.
So one of the things Mr. Haj mentioned at the committee meeting was an idea, the Rotary Club members' ideas, idea of accessibility and availability and permanence of, of the piece as well. You might want to add something about that?
Yeah, absolutely. That would be, you know, we're kind of feeling away along with this whole thing. But yeah, we would certainly want to have this, so the fact that it's accessible to the public as well as on predominant display somewhere, you know, we don't want it tucked back in the woods somewhere. We'd like to have it in a prominent display that would tell people in a manner of this came from Celine, it was part of the history and culture of Celine.
Yeah, I think, I think that's marvelous. I think that would be the one caveat that I would add, is that whatever is created at the end of this, if anything is created, that it be for the public, for public enjoyment and be prominently displayed. But besides that, I'm happy to delegate not to micromanage and to let you and Rotary and some local artists take the lead on it. And I'm assuming you're amenable to that as well?
Yes. I think, I think, well, I should have also said the committee was very enthusiastic, those members who were able to be there were very enthusiastic about the idea as well.
Okay, very good. Ms. Dillon, what are your thoughts on this?
I think it's a wonderful idea. It's just going to come down to like the last issue, which is funding, who's going to be paying for it.
Well, Rotary's were willing to help step up and fund us and pay for it.
Its entirety?
Well, we need to understand, well, it's a chicken or the egg, right? We need to understand what that cost is going to be. But I think we could probably get that determined fairly quickly, once we understand what the sculpture is going to be or a piece of art's going to be.
Is it something the community would vote on as to a style, or is it something that you, that the Rotary would have to say as to what the design is, the arts and culture? Who would be making the decision as to what this piece of art is and where it would be?
Well, we would hope that the Arts and Culture Group would make that determination of what it's going to be. We will help support those costs. Again, all we're looking for is that we use local people in the development, don't fly somebody infamously, we use something local here, as well as the sculpture has a meaning or purpose depicting the history somehow or other of Celine. And that's our only requirements.
That's wonderful, that's a very wonderful generous offer. Thank you.
Mr. CEO?
I love public art. It's well done. As a caveat, I think as long as it's enough for our material, I would certainly be in favor of this kind of a...
Very good. Mr. Rhodes?
I support the concept and thank you for stepping up and I have full faith in the ability of the Arts and Culture Committee to assist with the, uh, proper selection and placement.
Very good. Mr. Gierbaum? I concur. Okay. Ms. McClellan?
Yes, definitely. I, uh, as a member of Arts and Culture for a long time, I know we've had trouble with trying to find someone to do a public piece of art and, you know, getting it moving and going and this kind of fell into the lap of, so to speak, and we're really thankful for the Rotary generosity for helping bring in this forward, so.
Very good. Okay. Well, I think you have your consensus. Mr. Tahar, uh, between you and your colleagues on the Arts and Culture Committee, I'm assuming you'll add this as a discussion item or action item at your next meeting and please keep us in the loop.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Have a good evening. Uh, if there's nothing further on the Old Mod Tracks, um, I just wanted to remind everyone, you should have seen an email from Cheryl Hap, that the Weber Bliss Ice Cream Social is on Sunday, August twenty-first, and there's a competition between school staff and city council, I think both watermelon seed spitting and Pro K. Um, I believe that event begins at one, if I'm not mistaken.